Let's call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome this evening to our board meeting on November 8th. With that, I have a roll call tonight. All members are present. And we also have Avery, who will be our student rep for this evening, so thank you. We're excited to have you. Open forum, so open forum in accordance to Board Policy 203. A 15-minute time period is set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment. I have one speaker tonight, Jessica Olstead. I'd like to come forward. Just, and I miss my little, if you don't mind, Jessica, I usually have a little. I just want to read that speakers will not be allowed. We allow up to five speakers shall be provided for a maximum of three minutes, 15 minutes total to address the board. And then speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students. Nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personal information, private data regarding employees. Board members will listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but do not engage individuals during this time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up is needed or necessary, I will request that the superintendent or designate follow-up. And with that, thank you, Jessica.
Well, there went my entire speech. Just kidding. My name is Jessica Olstead, a proud Laker and Hamilton Ridge parent. My comments are twofold. First, I want to say a huge thank you to the families at Hamilton Ridge for not meeting but exceeding our fundraising goal. Generous donors raised more than $27,000 for our school. I lead the PTC there, and I couldn't be more proud to do it. We will use that money carefully and respectfully to put toward our staff and our teachers and our kiddos. They fill our cup, and we are so, so proud to climb the ridge with them. Secondly, I wanted to publicly thank our Tech Yes supporters from the past few months. The outcome certainly wasn't the one we wanted, but we know that there's plenty of support for Tech in our schools, and we'll be back. Thank you to Carrie Maurer Kurnow for being treasurer. Thank God. Someone else dealt with the numbers and the reporting, so you are a friend, Carrie. Thank you to Shannon and Heather and Nikki and Charlie and Lindsay and so many others who are our social media warriors. We appreciate you. The yard sign putter-uppers, the chalkers, the sign waivers, everybody, we thank you so much. We thank you Marcus and Christie for answering questions and giving parents some peace of mind with their answers. And of course, me as well. Thank you, teachers and staff and board, for doing the best you can with the circumstances and hands you are dealt. You deserve better, and we'll work even harder next time. Our support of you is unwavering. And believe it or not, thank you to the people who don't agree. You ask questions, you challenge, which is your right to do. And while we don't agree, I respect the respectful. And different opinions are necessary to critically think when done in a decent way. And I hope that we gave you another point of view as well. And to the countless others, you all know who you are for lending help, support, a good laugh when needed, a great text message. We're so lucky to live in this district and with these awesome schools, and no district is perfect, nor will it ever be. But we support you, and we will be back. Thank you.
All right. And that was only speaker tonight, so with that, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
Amy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 7-0. First item up is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items. Tonight's consent agenda financials are the check wire transfer disbursement summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement, the building bond investment reports, monthly wire detail, monthly health dental wire detail, monthly check detail, monthly ACH detail, and approval of the school board minutes for the regular board meeting October 11th and the study session October 25th. Personnel items, candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, non-renewals as listed, the district retirements, leave of absence, the organizational chart, the 21 and 22, and the assurance of compliance report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. And then on to Laker Pride with Dr. Stallow. Oh, sorry, I missed that. Resolution of acceptance of gifts. I missed one, sorry. And then lastly, before Laker Pride, is our resolution for acceptance of gifts. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of gifts as noted in your board packet?
So moved.
By Michael, second. By Enrique, this is a roll call vote. Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
That passes 7-0. Now we're at Laker Pride.
Good evening. It is great to see you all here this evening. I always love when there's a full room, when we get a chance to recognize and appreciate both community members as well as our students. So we've got a couple Laker Prides tonight, and the first invitation that I'd like to bring up to the front is representatives of the Prior Lake Rotary, Lake Fest Music Fest, Lakefront Music Fest, I'm sorry. So I'd ask Vic Nor and Michelle Jurick to come up on behalf of the tri-chairs. Frank Boils is unable to be with us this evening. But they are the tri-chairs of this amazing tradition that was started by the Prior Lake Rotary members 11 years ago. And 12! And the incredible contributions that this club continues to give to our students and our staff and our school district is unbelievable. So I want to thank Vic, thank Michelle, on behalf of the entire Rotary and our community. And I'd also like you just to share a few words and give us some updates.
Well, thank you. First of all, just want to thank all of the school board and members of the community. They've been great supporters of this event every year, and we always count on you guys for a lot of volunteer hours. And we couldn't do it without you, so we certainly thank you. And that's what this check represents here, is the, how much money was donated to the LABC, the PAA, and the PTCs for their efforts in volunteering in this past event. As you can see from the picture up there on the screen, we really hit it out of the park this year, had huge crowds. It was, it was pretty stressful on a lot of the volunteers. I know Mary's shaking her head, she knows. I remember talking with her at admissions and, yeah, it's, so hopefully it won't be that bad this year. But we certainly appreciate the volunteers and hope you guys all come back. This check represents just a portion of the money we gave to the nonprofit organizations that helped us out. The total amount was closer to $49,000. And we do plan on upping the amount that we're going to donate for volunteer hour for next year's event. So hopefully there'll be bigger checks coming to all the groups that helped us next year and into the future. Any else?
Thank you all very much. Thank you for this amazing opportunity and the contributions that you continue to give to our school district and our community. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
And not only do we have an opportunity to thank an amazing community group, but the reason we exist, the reason we get up in the morning is for some students who are with us today. These are students at Hamilton Ridge Elementary. And with that, I am going to hand it off to Principal Karen Zulinski.
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Stallow and school board. It is just a pleasure to be here today. First of all, I want to introduce our Dean of Students, Lindsay Comstock, over there on the end. And this is our new student leadership group. Their name is the Hamilton Ridge Rangers. And at a recent meeting, we had a great discussion, what is it like to learn at Hamilton Ridge? So these students put together a presentation for you so you can see and hear their experiences, their perceptions, and their view of what it's like to learn at Hamilton Ridge. Thank you. It is a joy to be here tonight and an absolute pleasure to introduce to you these wonderful fifth graders.
I am TJ Hall.
Micah Frye.
Avery Olsen.
Alex DiFiore.
Lucas Healy.
Smaya Islam.
Kenzie Olstead.
Owen Bounty.
Casey Kovacs.
Cole Darandall. Hamilton Ridge is such a cool school. A few highlights are, we have big, open areas where we can learn. We have a huge staircase called the Learning Stairs. We have comfortable furniture that can move around. We have four cubbies where students can read or do their work.
Ms. Vicki and the other custodians work hard to keep our school extra clean. As students, we are responsible for picking up after we eat breakfast in our classroom at the end of the day.
Each grade level has one pod that includes five classrooms and one big, open area in the middle. The classrooms at Hamilton Ridge are all different. Some have removable walls and sliding doors, while other classrooms are more open. We even have a neat room called a project classroom. This is where we are able to get messy with hands-on experiments and learning.
The way we learn at Hamilton Ridge is unique. We have whole group lessons and small group lessons. Students sometimes switch classrooms to work with another teacher to best help them learn. Our teachers call this flexible grouping. We also have a small group room in our pod that we use for learning.
We love to learn outside, too. Our teachers take us outdoors for recess, fayed, morning meeting, and science experiments and hikes.
The teachers at Hamilton Ridge are amazing. They care about us and expect us to work hard and do our best. Most importantly, they make learning fun. This year, everyone at Hamilton Ridge is learning something new called Zones of Regulation. There are four zones, red, yellow, green, and blue. Each zone represents different feelings. We are learning skills to help ourselves when we're in one of these zones. We are also learning a curriculum called Second Step, something all elementary students in Prior Lake Savage have.
Every day, Ms. Z does daily announcements. She tells us the Laker learning target for the week and reminds us what special events we have coming up. The Laker learning target is a simple ICANN statement that our entire school focuses on. Some examples are, I can use self-talk to stay focused. I can surprise others by performing random acts of kindness. And I can notice good things about others and make comments. This is our SEL learning target for the week. She ends every announcement with, "It's a great day to climb at Hamilton Ridge."
At Hamilton Ridge, our slogan is "Climb the Ridge." Teachers hand out hot climbing tickets to us when we show that we are demonstrating our cares. Once a week on the morning announcements, Ms. Z calls about 15 students. When our name is called, we get to choose how to celebrate. It could be eating lunch with Ms. Z or Ms. C, and a friend, extra recess for our class, iPad time, or special seating in the classroom.
We work hard at Hamilton Ridge, but we also have a lot of fun. We have had Eastham Days, Sliding Days, a fancy lunch day, dress like a book character day, hat days, and other dress-up days. Here are some pictures showing our silly side.
Just this year, we have finally been able to have all-school meetings. We do this outside in the bus loop. All students and staff are invited. One class does a quick SEL lesson. We celebrate our learning, sing "Happy Birthday," and end with our new school cheer. Music is played, and it's super fun. I look forward to our all-school meetings.
At Hamilton Ridge, everyone is welcomed and respected. Everyone is kind to you, even if you are new. Our school is a place you want to learn, grow, and make friends.
We love our school, and we want you to remember, "It's a great day to climb at Hamilton Ridge."
Well, thank you all for being here. Thank you for lending your voice, for reminding us of the amazing ways that you learn and the importance of student leadership. We're really proud of you, and we're so grateful that you were with us tonight to help us learn more about your school and the ways that you make it so great. So thank you very much. There is one last Laker Pride that I would like to do this evening. It is not on the agenda. Martha Walz, will you join me up front, please? As you know, there were a whole lot of people who were involved in running an election, but I want to give some special Laker Pride to Martha Walz, who did everything to ensure that we had an election that was fair, that was legal, that every single step of the way was absolutely perfect. And there is no one with the organizational skills that this woman has, with the research ability, with the networking, with the way that she gets amazing officials around her to help run this. And I just wanted to thank you. I know you moved your office into the conference room, and I miss seeing you every day, but was so grateful for the hours that you spent making sure that, like I said, the democratic process ran in a legal and ethical way, and you made sure that that happened. So thank you.
Okay. With that, we go to personnel items.
Board members, board chair, Dr. Stallow. I have two personnel items for you tonight. The first is an amendment to the terms and conditions for our health aides, which would be our LPNs, unlicensed health aides, RNs. Because of the COVID grant that we were given, it's provided us an opportunity with their increased workload to be able to change their terms and conditions of employment, and I recommend approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the health aide terms and conditions amendment approval?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique. Any comments or questions? Are we, I'm, I know we've had openings, I mean, like, trying to, this is hopefully going to help that situation.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The second personnel amendment here is on, is to change the, again, terms and conditions of employment for the Assistant Director of Operations, Transportation, and Health and Safety. What that position was and what it is now is very different. A lot of responsibilities have been added, and many of those responsibilities have been changed to an increased level of responsibility. And it appears as if it's a permanent change. And because of that, we did a job study, and it warranted a change in compensation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the contract amendment as listed?
So made.
That was Enrique, oh, Amy and Mary? Okay, Amy, and second by Mary. Any comments or questions? Mary?
Yep. Are we going to be looking at another job description since the increased responsibilities?
We made the decision not to have job descriptions come to the board for approval. We just made the changes and did it at the senior leader level.
Okay, but there is an updated job description reflected.
There is an updated job, yes, yes. And that has been shared out.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 7-0. There's no unfinished business this evening, and first up on the new business is the approval of the Joint High School Boys and Girls Alpine Ski Program with Prior Lake and Farmington. And that is Jeff Marshall.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. If I, if I could do a quick little change of protocol here, we do have, I think, one more group that we'd like to recognize before we get to this business. We do have folks here from the upcoming musical Wizard of Oz that is going to be taking place at the high school the weekend of the 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st. So if they want to come on in, just to be recognized real quick.
Okay.
See, we have Dorothy, Scarecrow, the Tin Man, Glinda, and of course, the Wicked Witch, and Toto is here as well, whose real name is Toto. So we are super, super excited and thrilled that the theater department is going to be offering. And I believe our director is here as well, too, Philip. But again, coming up very soon, this is kind of a little promotional piece on the week, like I said, the weekend of the 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st. Tickets are available. It's going to be a fantastic show, and we encourage all of our public to be able to come out and watch it. If they go to the website, they can purchase tickets now. So again, very, very excited that you're all here and very, very excited for the show.
All right. Awesome.
All right, hello, everyone. We are a huge, featured ensemble members from the Wizard of Oz, and we are actually going to perform. We're off to see the Wizard of Oz.
Oh, my gosh. Oh.
We're off to see the Wizard, the wonderful Wizard of Oz. We find the Wizard of Oz, the Wizard of Oz. He's a wonderful Wizard of Oz, the Wizard of Oz is one because, 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 because he does. He has the wonderful things he does. We're off to see the Wizard, the wonderful Wizard of Oz. Again, we thank you so, so much. I don't know, I didn't know if you guys wanted to hear from me, I'm so evil.
Yes.
We really, really encourage you all to come see it. It is so much fun. Bring your children, bring your extended family, bring everyone. And we thank you guys all so much for what you do for us, and we just, we really appreciate you. You're funding my whole, like, my ambitions, my dreams, and it's just, seriously, like, I want to go to college for theater, and I couldn't do that and find that passion without all of you. So I really, really appreciate every single person who's around here.
Thanks, you guys.
We appreciate it. Certainly, again, director was, director Philip Hoaks is back there, too, and a big thank you to him and for his work with the theater program. And very, very excited to be able to see you guys on stage, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks for crashing.
Why they lay him in the back of the car?
Little change in protocol there. I appreciate your willingness to be able to accept them and listen to them, so I think it's important that they're able to be able to come up and shine as well, too. So, so I am presenting to you tonight a, a motion to be able to set up a cooperative agreement in the world of alpine skiing for our girls and our boys program, to do, set up a cooperative agreement with Farmington High School. This agreement has actually been in place previously to this year. It was set up last year for the regular season, and so we did compete with Farmington during that time. And in the world of alpine skiing, it's actually very, very common for cooperative agreements to be set up. You actually see them quite a bit throughout the state and within our section. So this resolution tonight, what it allows us to do is to extend that cooperative agreement throughout not only the regular season, but also into our postseason play, and so that the team would continue to be one team as we go into sections and hopefully the state meet at that point.
Okay, and this is a resolution, so I'm going to read it, and then I'll ask for a motion. Whereas a proposed agreement has been negotiated and drafted regarding the cooperative sponsorship of a joint high school boys and girls alpine ski program between Prior Lake High School and Farmington High School. Okay, and do I have a motion to accept the cooperative?
So made.
By Julie, second?
Second.
By Mary. Any comments, questions? I have one, I'm just going to jump. We had this in place before. How many athletes are we talking from?
So from Farmington, we're talking just one athlete at this point. It would open up the door for potentially a few others, but there's a family, so we're looking at maybe two this year.
And how many do we have participating in?
Between the girls and the boys team, we have approximately 20 total.
20 total, okay. Mary?
We have other cooperatives, correct?
We do. Yep, yep, we have a cooperative agreement that's in place in girls swimming with Jordan High School. That's the main one that comes to mind. And that's one is set up throughout the entire season, so it also includes the postseason competitions as well, sections and state.
Now, these cooperative agreements, just to, just to be clear, a lot of times it helps the conference overall. Is that, is this, is this helping Farmington actually get more kids into the program to have this program, as well as other schools like Jordan?
Yep, that's the expectation, is that over, now, in a situation like Jordan where they don't have a pool within their school district, it allows their swimmers the opportunity to be able to participate. And in both of these programs that we're talking about, we don't have, you know, we don't make cuts or we don't have any sort of limitations in terms of the number of participants. And so it's not doing anything in terms of excluding any of our students to be able to participate during that time. With Farmington, the goal or the expectation will be that the growth will happen within that sport, and then at some point, they'll be able to have it on their own as a separate sport.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Aye, that passes 7-0. And then next up is the World's Best Workforce presentation. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, good evening, everyone. Oops. There we go. All right, well, good evening. Lovely to see you all this evening. I'm here to present the World's Best Workforce. You have seen most of this data already. And then since you saw that, the entire report has gone to the District Curriculum Advisory Committee. They gave their input, and now I'm presenting that as a final package to the board before this information moves on into a report that's submitted to MDE. All right, so I wanted to start out by presenting some context for the data that you'll see this evening, then show you some of the results of the World's Best Workforce and some of those goals. And I want to reiterate that this is a report about last year, so you'll see dates from last school year, and that's because the report does cover the school year that we were previously in, and the goals are for this school year. So some of the context around the data that you'll see this evening is definitely the pandemic. Students were in and out of different learning models. That was different than we'd had in the past. And another thing that is different in the data that you see is the participation rate. So in the past, MCA tests were taken by nearly 100% of our students in the high 90s, and the participation during the pandemic dropped to between 70 and 77%. So you can see those reported here. So the green line is the performance of Prior Lake Savage Area School students, and that compares to what happens statewide. And then highlighted, you can see the And then, highlighted, you can see the participation rates from 2019, and then compared to 2021. Again, there was no MCA given in the year 2020, which is why that data is absent. You can see that reflected in our reading scores, as well as our math scores. All right, so another part of the context are the students that are taking the MCAs and are part of our school district. And so, to answer the question, who are our students? We can look at some demographic info. This is, again, from last school year, so October one count from 2020. We're looking here at race and ethnicity data. About, about three-quarters of our students are white, and then around five or six percent of our students are in the categories two or more races, Hispanic or Latino, Asian, and Black or African-American, with just under one percent of our students as American Indian or Alaska Native. And you can see those numbers reflected here. And we can compare that to the state, which is closer to about two-thirds white and a third students of color. There are other ways to look at demographics and different student groups, and so we are comparing student groups in Prior Lake Savage area schools to those in Minnesota, looking at our English learners, special ed, and students receiving free, reduced-price meals are all lower than those of the state as a whole. All right, we will continue with the World's Best Workforce. So, this is legislation that requires us to report every year about all children being ready for school. This builds on to all third graders being able to read at grade level. Then, we're looking at all racial and economic achievement gaps between students being closed, students being ready for career and college, and students graduating from high school. That's the language right from the legislation. So, we'll first take a look at school readiness. In Prior Lake Savage area schools, we look at students as they enter kindergarten, and I have data for the last two years since we began with a different testing tool. We use FastBridge Learning Early Math and Early Reading. And we can see in the years 2020 and 2021, the students came in at really similar readiness rates. So, seventy-nine percent of students at that low-risk proficiency in early math, and around two-thirds in reading. We then look at our third-grade reading level, which, over the past two years, so from 2019 to 2021, fell, as well as did statewide. Again, couched in that context of the pandemic and changes in learning models, that you see those changes reflected by the state, too, and that additional one-quarter of students who are not testing. Again, with that context, we can look at achievement gaps. Those widened from 2019 to 2021. And this is achievement gaps, looking at MCA test scores and third graders in reading. And we can look at some different student groups as well. So, these graphs look at English language learners, and then students who are not English language learners. Students not English language learners are represented across the top, and then English language learners across the bottom. Students receiving special education services are the yellow solid line, and students not receiving special ed services are represented by the dotted line across the top. And students receiving free, reduced-price meals are represented by the solid line across the bottom. Students not receiving free, reduced-price meals, the dotted line on top. Again, these are all looking at third-grade reading scores. Moving on to students being ready for career and college. In Prior Lake Savage area schools, we have an array of ways that we support students being ready for both career and college. And you can see some of the different badges and emblems of different programs that students can participate in here. One of the measures that we use is looking at the ACT composite scores. And so, with a goal of, of an average of twenty-five, if we look at the class of 2021, that group was very close, and there's an asterisk by that number, because normally, our students are taking that test as a, as a group in April. And in twenty, for the class of 2021, they were actually taking that six months later in fall. And then, our class of 2022, that group was taking the test as juniors in April of their junior year. Bringing it back to some of the other World's Best Workforce goals, one of those being narrowing achievement gaps. We can see that there are achievement gaps that also are represented in ACT scores. So, we can see that not just in third-grade reading, but all the way into average ACT scores. And then, another aspect of being college and career-ready is actually finding out what students are doing after they graduate. And so, this represents the proportion of students, both statewide and in Prior Lake Savage area schools, that are going on to either a two- or four-year college. And the colors there just indicate if that is in Minnesota or outside of Minnesota. You can see that nearly three-quarters of our students are pursuing some post-secondary option. And of the students, so of the, of the three-quarters that go on to a post-secondary option, about fifteen percent of them in the class of 2019 needed some sort of developmental education. So, development, developmental education are the courses that are, are basic courses at the post-secondary level. Students aren't receiving post-secondary credits for those. So, we're looking, we want that number to be low. Another measure of students being ready for career and college is that coursework and credits earned ahead of time. Currently, fifty-seven percent of our seniors have been enrolled in AP courses while at the high school. And then, if we go back and think about the proportion of students and different gaps as far as enrollment in AP courses go with that class of 2022, it's actually really close. So, the lighter blue represents the proportion of students enrolled in AP courses, and the darker blue represents the proportion of students who are enrolled at Prior Lake High School. For parity, those would be even. If the light line goes beyond, that means a higher proportion is enrolled in the AP courses than at the high school. We can then move on to graduation rates. And we're always looking at a four-year graduation rate in Minnesota. That is also part of that World's Best Workforce language. And so, this is all, any student involved, enrolled in Prior Lake Savage area schools, so whether they be at Bridges or at the high school. And that rate was ninety-four point one percent in 2020. And we can look at the gaps for that. So, there is a statewide goal of every student group graduating at eighty-five percent, or that eighty-five percent of every group graduates within four years. And so, there is one group that we would like to help achieve that goal as well. If we look just at Prior Lake High School, in the year 2020, the highest graduation rate that, that I've seen with, for Prior Lake Savage area schools with the way to calculate it that was devised in 2015. So, that's something to be really proud of, ninety-seven point eight percent of students graduating. If we look at what that looks like compared to other schools in similar size and demographic districts, we are right up there. That is great. And so, just a quick summary. Again, the context of these results was different because of the pandemic this past two years. We looked at quite a lot of student achievement data, and we saw that there was some disproportionality. And along with that, or like, the student achievement data is, is interesting. We're, we want that to be the best it possibly can. We are about our students' learning. And part of that means we're also interested in our student experience. So, what you're missing here and not seeing as part of the World's Best Workforce is information about the student experience. We do collect that in different ways with, through surveys and focus groups. And then, the World's Best Workforce goals. So, the school continuous improvement process starts with schools defining their current realities, so looking at the data that they've got, defining what the desired future is going to be in the form of a goal, and then figuring out the action steps and implementing that action throughout the year to get there. We devise SMART goals. So, the SMART goals are specific, they're measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. And that is the format that these goals get sent to MDE. And so, our kindergarten-ready goal is around the percentage of students scoring that low-risk category on the FastBridge reading assessment. Additionally, the kindergarten-ready, or all students being ready for school, has a proponent of it from early childhood, and that is based on their, they have a specific assessment in early childhood, and we'll be submitting that as well. Our third-grade reading goal is around meeting or exceeding the MCA assessment proficiency rate, moving from fifty-three percent in 2021 to sixty-nine percent in 2022. We are looking to decrease gaps in that third-grade MCA reading assessment, moving from twenty-two percentage points of a gap to sixteen in 2022. And these are all based on goals that we have for the year 2025 of students achieving at eighty percent proficiency. Moving on to the college and career-ready section, we are looking for an increase in, in our ACT average. And the graduation rate, as I had mentioned earlier, the one group that is not yet meeting the Minnesota state goal are Hispanic students. And so, we are taking action to make that percentage point change. All right, and I've got that state goal up there. All right, what are your questions?
Any questions?
I just want to reiterate something you talked about, because you talked about the gaps in proficiency and how we want them to narrow, and we have goals for that. And it makes perfect sense. I just want to call out, and you said it, but I want to call it out loud and clear that as we do that, it's not, it's not in an effort to lower any groups.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, it's an eighty percent for 2025, and we hope to narrow that, and everybody rises in that.
That's correct.
With those goals. Okay, I just wanted to call that out.
Anyone else? Mary?
When we're talking about the goals, when is, first of all, when is the FastBridge provided? Is that in the fall?
That's a great question. So, the FastBridge screeners are given in three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. So, those are in kindergarten through eighth grade in fall, winter, and spring.
So, are we comparing?